You finished all your food?
Not all. What?
Called to order our regular city council meeting for January ninth, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome all. Firstly, bear with me. I'm not contagious, but I do have this lingering dry cough, so try to get through this as quickly as I possibly can. Before we get started, it's exciting this year. We've got three new council members. And I think we're going to do a swearing swearing in ceremony. So Cindy, please.
But I support the Constitution of the United States. I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington and the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington and the city of Cheney. And faithfully, and I will faithfully discharge the duties, discharge the duties of city council, of city council, to the best of my ability, to the best of my ability.
I'm getting.
I did yellow bar.
I did yellow bar.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington. And the city of Cheney. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the city council, the best of my ability, to the best of my ability.
Wonderful. Thank you, family and friends for being here. See some in the crowd there. Now roll call.
Honorable Mayor Grover.
I'm here.
Councilmember Overhauser.
Present.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Present.
Councilmember Raichels.
Present.
Councilmember Belloc.
Present.
Councilmember Nazaro.
Present.
Councilmember Labar.
Present.
Councilmember Posthuma.
Present.
We are all here. Welcome to 2024. Okay, moving on. This is an opportunity for our citizens to make comment if they so wish. Anybody? I didn't get any signed up or an email, but if there's anybody that wishes to speak, please come up. Yes, come on, Corinna. And as always, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Corinna Donnerburg and I live here in Cheney. And first of all, I just wanted to congratulate the new council members. We're excited to see some fresh faces and excited to see what happens this year. A couple of random items. One, for Mayor Grover, I didn't know if you were aware that when some of your Edward Jones colleagues are going door to door to drum up business, they are mentioning that you're the mayor as part of their sales pitch. And so, you know, I think there's a concern that might be perceived as using public office for private benefit. So I don't know if, yeah, if maybe that's something you want to check in with them about if you weren't noticing that they came to our house over the holidays. Curious that there's any update about where the police department is and the accreditation process or the formation of a civil service commission. I know those are ongoing kind of outstanding items. Just curious to know what might be going on there. And then the Chevron cleanup. I think that my last communication with Chief Jenkins was in late October. I'm out working on a plan. The Department of Ecology in September released data that there was contamination and I haven't had luck so far getting in touch with them about where they're at in the process. I know they're the lead cleanup agency. But in terms of like responsible parties and the Chevron cleanup piece, I'm just curious if there's any news to share with the public there. Thank you.
Thank you, Corinna. Anybody else in the crowd? How about those that are joining us virtually? Anybody wish to comment? See any going once? Going twice? Okay, well, let's move on to the minutes of our December 26th regular city council meeting minutes. I'm sorry, regular city council meeting. You've all had an opportunity to review those. If there's no corrections, I'd accept the motion to approve those. So moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. I have a motion to second to approve our December 26, 2023 city council meeting minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our minutes are approved. Vouchers and payroll, Cindy.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the time of year for this meeting and the next three that you'll have 2023 and 2024 expenditures to approve. So you'll have those finance committee will read those separately, put their recommendation. Our 2023 vouchers are nine hundred sixteen thousand six hundred seventeen dollars and twenty one cents. That's made up of the expenditures of eight hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred seventy four dollars and nine cents and other payables of twenty five thousand, seven hundred forty three dollars and twelve cents. The two thousand twenty, the two thousand twenty four bills that we're paying are forty three thousand, six hundred six dollars and forty five cents. And total payroll for December was one thousand one hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred ninety six dollars and fifty seven cents.
Your Honor, the finance committee reviewed these items. I would move approval of the 2023 vouchers and pay other payables.
All second that. Thank you. I have a motion to second to approve the 2023 vouchers as presented. All in favor say.
Oh, twenty, did you say twenty three?
Twenty twenty three.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
Do we have to do those separately?
We're doing them individually. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you say twenty twenty three. I apologize.
Nope, no worries. I have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Your Honor, we also reviewed the twenty four vouchers and I would move approval.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion to second to approve the 2024 vouchers as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And finally, I would also move for to pay the payroll total.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion to second to approve payroll as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Cindy. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four vouchers and payroll are approved. We didn't have any claims for damages, which is nice. You can see the small contract that I signed. It's no cost, group membership agreement for the lifelight network. No information items or appointments, but we do have a couple of action items. And the first one is resolution F two two one. This is the F S M E labor contract mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Give me one second to get queued up. Okay. After I presented this as an information item and last council meeting, there were some questions about the Washington paid family medical leave program. So I'm going to kick off before we get into the contract itself, I'm going to give you a little little update on what the Washington paid family medical leave program is. So this is originated with Senate Bill fifty nine seventy five in two thousand seventeen. The program is actually administered by the Washington State Employment Security Department. To fund this program, they, the revenue comes from premiums paid by employees and employers as a part, a percentage of the employee's gross wages, and that's point eight percent of those gross wages. Of that point eight percent, the employer pays twenty seven point two four and the employee pays seventy two point seven six. They began collecting the premiums on one one of two thousand nineteen with the benefits starting to be, or the program came in to be where people could actually apply and receive benefits on one one of two thousand and twenty. As eligibility goes, employees who have worked for a minimum of eight hundred and twenty hours in Washington during the qualifying period. And that eight hundred and twenty hours doesn't have to simply be with one employer. It's their total hours work could be across multiple employers. Once they cross that eight twenty hours worked, they become eligible. What this can be used for, it's any employee or if they're responsible for caring for a family member that has a qualifying event, which is excuse me, a serious illness or injury that would prevent them from working. Birth or of a child or a child joining the family via adoption as an example, and certain military events. What the employee receives from the state, they receives up to ninety percent of their average weekly wage. That is calculated by the employment security department based off of the quarterly reports that we have to submit on hours worked and total wages. I can tell you that there's been, just talking to some of our brethren across several cities, there's been some, some issues with that with the ESD getting the average weekly compensation right. So this is a, you know, a fairly new program. There's still some bugs and things to work out, but just for reference purpose, the maximum weekly benefit for this program is for one thousand four hundred and fifty six dollars per week. So what does this provide or how much time does it give? It provides up to twelve weeks of paid family medical leave per year in most cases. There are some cases where an employee can receive more than twelve weeks in a year. One of those, they can get up to sixteen weeks if they have more than one qualifying event. So let's say they have to be out of work. They, they broke a leg. So they use up, you know, however many weeks there, and then they have another medical condition that would cause them to go over the twelve. They could have up to sixteen weeks for that. In circumstances where an employee is having, you know, a problem pregnancy or childbirth results in their incapacity for some reason, they can actually get up to eighteen weeks of the this PFML. PFML can be taken all at once, so they're gone from point A to point B, or it could actually be used intermittently, but it does have to be taken in eight hour increments. Since we are an employer, employer of more than fifty employees, we are required to protect the jobs of the employees if they're out on PFML. So we have to hold the job open for them. So when they're ready to come back, they have a job available. And that's assuming, of course, they have twelve months and two hundred and fifty hours with us at the time. So what the employee has to do to get the ball rolling, to receive PFML, they have completed an application, including a certification from a healthcare provider. They submit all that stuff to the employment security department. Employees are also supposed to let their employer know of the application. The ESD then sends us a notice that an application has been filed and I can tell you there's a lag. In some cases, quite a bit of a lag between the time it's been they've applied, the time it's been approved and the time we're noticed. So it makes it very difficult for us to figure out what's going on. Are these people approved? Are they not approved? Should they be using their sick leave or vacation leave, you know, from the, that the city provides or not? So that's again, some more bugs that sort of need to be work out, worked out. Weekly, the employees do have to submit claim forms to receive. Weekly, the employees do have to submit claim forms to receive their compensation. And just some final notes, employees don't have to exhaust any of their city accrued time, so their vacation or sick leave to be able to tap into the P F M L funds. You know, we, we've had a couple of cases where employees have elected to do P F M L rather than use up their city accrued leave. It happens. And just to make it very clear, these are not city funds that the employee is getting. This is state funds. This is the funds that's coming from the, the E S D from the program. One interesting note that people need to be aware of, they're going to take advantage of this program is you do not earn service credit with the Department of Retirement while you're out on this P F M L sponsored leave. And you're not accruing seniority with the city. And you're not accruing your vacation or your sick leave, you know, while you're out and, you know, unpaid status from the city while you're receiving funds from the state. What we do here at the city is, you know, with our accrued leave, our, our sick and vacation, we allow people to use that if they're out on what we call family medical leave, F M L A leaves, not connected to the P F M L. We try to run that concurrently. The use of their sick and vacation with the P F M L. So when somebody comes in and said, hey, I need to be out of work. Here's my doctor's certification. Carrie immediately sends them notice saying, hey, this is determined to be a leave covered by family medical leave. And so that would start your twelve week clock, you know, for your F M L A benefit. Where this can get a little bit problematic from a staffing perspective is if people start stacking these things up on top of one another, they'll exhaust one and then go to another. We haven't had that big an issue with it here at the city, but I know others have. We had one of our police officers that went to a training over on the west side of the state and was chatting with a, another person at the training said their, their department actually had five officers out on extended, you know, P F M L, which makes it very, very tough to, to staff city. When you have to hold these jobs, you can't necessarily go out and, you know, find somebody to replace them in the interim. So this, this program is definitely a work in progress. It's a great safety net. I will say that. You know, I, if, if it was me in this position, it'd be an absolute last resort. If I'm losing out on retirement credit, I'm losing out on my accrued benefits here at the city, I, I certainly would, would have to exhaust everything before I would use this, but not everybody views, views like I. So let's get into the crux of the contract. So as you saw last time, just here's a summary of, of some of the bigger changes to the contract. We covered sick leave, compensation benefits, the P F M L like I just talked about, union security, weekly schedules, potential additional holiday, the use of equipment and, and defining the equipment classifications. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on each one of these. The union security language, we had to update based on some changes brought on by the Janus Supreme Court case on union membership. And we also had to update based on some legislation that came down from the state on the timing and the provision of certain information to unions based on employee hours and employee wages and hours. And for reference purposes, that's just R C W forty-one dot fifty-six dot oh three five. Basically, it says we have to provide information to the unions about their members every, at a minimum of a hundred and twenty days. So we're complying with that. So we just, we just memorialize that in the contract language. Hours of work, this was a very simple edit, just to capture all the schedules that, that our employees are working, that are members of the bargaining unit, whether they be just your, your standard five eights or the four tens and the, the nine eighty schedules that a few people are working these days. So the holidays, one of the, and the, and the, their bargaining unit is alone, many have started to bring this up, is the addition of the Juneteenth holiday. Most cities in our region, after looking, have already adopted this for two thousand twenty-three, actually. So we certainly entertained the, the idea that was brought up to, to add this to the city holidays. And some questions were asked at the last meeting about just holidays and floating holidays and things, and whether or not we had to recognize all state holidays. So just a little bit of information here, the city has provided two floating holidays as far back as two thousand and nine. And I think it back, went back a little bit farther than that, but that's, those, the material in front of me or the documents I had in front of me, I can verify it back that far. Mr. Schmidt had asked a question about the uniform personnel. They do receive eight hours of holiday pay. If, if holiday falls on a day they're not scheduled to work, and that's per both of the, the labor contracts. So getting into whether or not municipalities have to follow all the state holidays, we actually don't. By R C W one point one six dot oh five oh, section six, the legislative body of each local government may choose to adopt more or fewer paid holidays, holidays through their ordinances, resolutions, personnel policies, or collective bargaining agreements. And doing some research on this, we, we found that, you know, there's a few cities across the state that, that recognize sort of their own holidays, we'll call them. There's a couple of cities on the west side in, in looking at the, in looking what they do, like they get, they don't denote Christmas Eve Day as a holiday and like New Year's Eve Day as a holiday. So it kind of just goes to show that the local legislature, local legislatures do have some, some say in, in what are holidays and what aren't. We also polled some of the other cities. Just how did they handle going to, you know, recognizing Juneteenth as a paid holiday? Of the thirty-eight responses, we got thirty-seven added Juneteenth as additional without employee, requiring employees to give up, say, a floating holiday or, or anything else. One small city over on the west side is currently negotiating exchanging a floating holiday for Juneteenth. So that was just the, the response we got. And those, that was a range of cities from very small to, to much bigger cities. Also, there was a request for what our estimated cost would be to add this holiday in, you know, missed work time, that sort of thing. We, we, with working with Cindy in particular, thinks it's around fifty thousand dollars or so. Just based on employees being off the day and not performing services. Sick leave, this was just a simple update to ensure compliance with the changes Washington State made to sick leave accrual and the authorization for use. We did add the language clarifying, you know, the responsibilities for the premiums for the Washington State Paid Family Medical Leave Benefit Program, which you'll see in the contract. Wages, getting into wages, we, we did update the language on scheduling of overtime for snow plowing, just to clarify the process for, for scheduling, snow plowing for bargaining unit members. We addressed standby pay, just a language change to add some specifics and accountability for bargaining members that might be assigned as on-call. And that could be in, in any one of, in any one of the departments that we have here at the city. And then pay schedule. So what we were negotiating was a six and a half percent increase for two thousand twenty-four, a six percent for two thousand twenty-five, and a six percent for two thousand and twenty-six. Just to go to a little context, this particular bargaining unit experienced about a one to one point two five percent increase each year over the last three years of their existing contract and really had fallen behind some of their peers in other like jurisdictions. And also taking into account the, the labor market we recruit from, we have to consider what Spokane's paying, you know, what Spokane Valley's paying, what the county's paying. Even in some cases, what private contractors are paying for the, the talented service or the services of our talented employees. So we want to stay competitive with, with those wages. This is a, a chart I put together, and this was data pulled from the Association of Washington Cities does benefits and wage survey every year. And so this is just putting some comparables together just to let you, let you see kind of where we were lagging most behind. The two that we were, we were most behind in were our clerical, which is, is our, what we call our administrative clerk two, their journey levels. These are somewhat experienced administrative clerks that, that perform duties across the utility building to finance, even into parks and rec. And then our wastewater treatment plant operators, we discovered they were about sixteen percent below what their peers were making. So we wanted to certainly address those wages in this very tight and competitive labor market. To address those two classifications of folks that were, were lagging farther behind than others, we were proposing adding a point, point seven five percent to the administrative clerk and the treatment plan operators, one, two, and three, just to catch them up and get them more competitive with their peers. We also did add in some language to reopen the contract in two thousand twenty-five. We're going through an exercise to really do an analysis of the operations and the positions. And there may be some negotiating on, you know, the types of work that's being performed and the delegation of duties to potentially some of the bargaining unit members as we sort of look to our operation to make sure that we're being very efficient. And we're also comparing, say, apples to apples. So rather than have this one just big gigantic equipment operator classification, we're going to look specifically at the functions of each and every job and making sure that they're paid appropriately as compared to people performing similar work in, in other cities and other counties in our, in our region. Section ten point eight, that's the deferred compensation match, just simply adding five dollars per month each year of the contract for bargaining unit members. That's kind of a standard thing that we've done. We encourage everyone to participate in, in deferred compensation as it's a great way to plan for your retirement. We also did decide to add a longevity step in for employees at five, fifteen, and twenty-five years. That's basically a two percent for each of those milestones that employees have hit. And it's just a means to keep our very talented and very experienced people here. Once you get to the top step of a pay range, there's nowhere really to go. And again, we've invested a lot of training time. We count on these people being a very lean staffed organization. Anybody that leaves, it, it, it's a real hardship, you know, for us to, to perform work to meet the, the, I think, the level of service that our community expects. So we need to protect our people and, and keep them here. The dental language, fourteen point five point two, this is simply just to identify the current A W C benefit trust dental and orthodontia rider plans. Viva, just setting the city Viva contribution to the bargaining unit members at sixty dollars for two thousand twenty-four. And then we did discuss kind of the use of equipment, just adding definition to the use of city vehicles and, and equipment by bargaining unit members based on the type of equipment and whether or not it required a C D L certification to actually operate. And that is, is it? I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions for Mark on the Paid Family Leave brief or the F S M E contract?
There was one, this is, you're going to explain it and I'm going to, oh, yeah. On the very last page, the additional five dollars a month and each year of the contract for bargaining unit members, can you explain that to me a little better?
For?
The last section eight, ten point eight deferred compensation match.
So what we provide is, and, and these are different, we provide different matches. So the employee puts a certain amount into the four fifty-seven plan and the city will match up to in, in certain bargaining units, it's a dollar figure, certain bargaining units, it's a percentage. In their particular case, it's a dollar figure. So we're just adding five dollars to what we, I can't remember what their numbers do.
More than.
One sixty-five.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't.
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
Thanks, Mark. I'd ask, I'd send Mark some questions regarding the holiday. The addition of Juneteenth, which I have no problem with. And I appreciate the review on the legal with regard to the state of Washington lists in the R C W their holidays for state employees and they're at eleven. With this contract in Cindy Cheney would be at thirteen holidays now. And I also, and I, Cindy, I appreciate her doing the work where a holiday costs about fifty thousand dollars for each, for each holiday. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So, so what we're doing is, for me, that's the, the bargaining unit, the F S M E bargaining unit. Now, again, I'd ask them, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first agreement before us now with the additional holiday. And subsequently, what happens in, they call it me too, but the next contracts, they'll expect the same thing because, you know, we potentially approved this one.
And, and some of the contracts do have language, say, if the city adopts, we, we get it.
Yeah.
It's already written in the.
Yeah, okay. So to me then, I I took it rather in the collective bargaining world, you, you know, it is, it's bargaining, you kind of trade off, but this appears to be a freebie to me. Now, I'm not suggesting that again, I'm not suggesting that we don't do recognize Juneteenth. I have no issue with that. Swear, we, we should, and I don't see why we won't. It's just the other two floating. What, what I would suggest is if we could go back, I mentioned to Carrie before I guided, whether she would like me or not after I suggested this, but at, at one point in time, we had a, with regard to our wellness program, we were able to earn a day off by following all our wellness requirements. And we still are. In, in each year, we work very hard to become a well city. And what that means is if we follow certain criteria and a certain number of employees meet that criteria, we get a two percent discount on our medical premiums. And I say a certain amount of employees because some employees choose not to participate. And, and it's like everything else in this world, there's you know, always rely on some, those that, that will and do for the betterment of all. Anyhow, long story short, I would like to see for, for adding Juneteenth, whether we could see if, and Mark's done a great job with his contract. All the contracts have gone to other boards. So much is now scoped towards retaining our public employees. We need to stay up with the market. And you'll see here on where we sometimes we lag behind, but it's critical that we stay within our market or keep up with that. So we don't lose employees to other competitors, not being probably the county and Spokane Valley, city Spokane Valley. I don't know about the city of Spokane. They have, excuse me, they have a different retirement system and I don't know if too many are flocking to the city of Spokane or not, but anyhow, I would really, for my own, I would really like to see if we could and when we have these collective bargaining agreements coming forward to us, you don't want to reject them, nor do you want to bargain in, in session. You leave that up to the mayor's office and the C administrator. So a lot of times, if you have some wishes, you could say those, but it's not for us to get in and monkey around with language. I'm not suggesting that at all. But this contract goes into effect in January. We still have another meeting. And I would like to defer this item to see if Mark could come back with something with regard to the, one of the flowing holidays that would be, that would give something back to the city if they would want to participate and earn a, a well day off and they would get their floating holiday. And that helps all this by keeping up as a well city. And that's just my recommendation. And I'll look forward to some other thoughts or suggestions on that, but I see no reason that we couldn't defer it to see if Mark could come back with something to address the, the floating holiday.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Any other comments, questions?
Okay, I have a quick question. What's the timeline on these negotiations? When do we have to have this figured out?
Well, there's not so much timeline. The, the last contract entered on, on December thirty-first. And sometimes these things stretch into the next year. And what we usually do is retro, you know, any increase back to January one. So when we get the deal done, we get the deal done and then people get there.
Okay. So it's not going to affect it if we table it till next.
No, no, not necessarily. It's just going to be a little bit more work on Cindy's department's part to, you know, pull all those, you know, back wages. Thank you. Thank you.
The, um, when, uh, Mark's predecessor would come years ago with, uh, negotiations and report what she, what she suggested and recommended we do. I would always say, well, what, what we're, what are we getting? And there would be this shock in the room, there were, you could hear the, you know, oh, I, uh, yeah. But no, I, I agree with, uh, I agree with Councilman Schmidt, that I don't call it, I refer to as negotiations, not bargaining, but negotiate, same thing. When you sit down and negotiate, somebody gets something and somebody gets something back. And I, I also agree that, because I've had people ask me, why doesn't the city, isn't the city giving the employees the, you know, Juneteenth? And I said, because it's a negotiated item. If we want to have another holiday, we need to talk about what, what the balance is. And so, um, yeah, I, I like the idea of at least in a roundabout way, even getting something for, you know, I hate it when it's the city and the, something back for the community a- as a balance financially, um. And if it's, if it's the, the, um, wellness element, that, that's, that's a good start. So anyway, I, I also think that we should be hesitant to go overboard in terms of the number of days off that considering other communities don't, or other, other jurisdictions don't.
Anything else, Mark?
Go ahead. Thanks, Mark. Mine's on Article ten, the wage section, and I'm all for, um, bringing us up to speed where everyone else is, I think that'd be great. My question is, it looks like we're below max average on, on all of those positions, which is great, but eleven, nine, sixteen and ten, and we're talking about going up eighteen percent over the next three years. Did we just pick that number thinking, let's get ahead of?
Well, it's not so much to get ahead as to keep pace.
It'll keep pace.
Yeah.
So the eighteen will keep pace as everyone else.
Yeah, I mean, talking, talking to other cities, everybody's expecting, you know, these types of increases to continue. And, um, we just, again, want to keep pace and try to maybe catch up a little bit. Yeah, maybe, maybe other jurisdictions don't get to six percent, maybe they go to four percent or five percent. It allows us to get closer.
To get closer, right. Yeah, and then second, we had talked, I think, um, Councilman Bartels had asked about the, um, full-time wage, um, new minimum that the state was coming out with, do we get any answers about that?
Yeah, we're actually working, Carrie and I are working through that right now. There, there is actually one position, uh, in the city that we're going to have to address. It's not in this bargaining unit, it's actually not in any bargaining unit. So we, we are, we are looking into that, though.
Well, it's a requirement, right? We'll have to do it.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just working with particular, uh, department head, you know.
Sounds good.
Yep.
You have any questions?
Just one really quick question or comment. At the tail end of ten point seven, we, we have some language in there about the re opener. I was wondering if we can add a word, uh, to discuss, discuss classifications, benefits and wages.
Yep. We can do that.
I'm just throwing things in, work roles?
Work roles? You mean adding two words?
Yeah. Got it.
Yep, we can certainly do that.
And I guess just for discussion purposes, I mean, if we're going to have a re opener, it's, right now it's pretty narrow. Work rules is, if that falls in that list, is that what you're saying?
I mean, yeah, it goes in the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not, not just work roles.
No, I, no, I get it. I'm just saying, right now it's narrowly confined to those four things. Do we want to be broader than that?
I don't know. You don't have to. I'm just suggesting it. Is it a bad thing?
No, I, I, I agree with you.
Okay.
I just, I guess what, my point is, we're pretty narrow right now to classification, wages, benefits and work roles. Do we want to, do we want to not put a a cap on the reopening?
Well, let me, uh, if I may, Your Honor, um, it's just a suggestion, you, you don't want to get too specific with instructions to, when we get into this. You know, when we have a tent and everything, and then leave that with the, the negotiators, you never know, something could get, uh, misconstrued, and then you have some legal, if we got some thoughts and ideas, it's great to convey that. But overall, you just, okay, why don't you just go back and then bring us back another version, we'll take a look at that, rather than getting into the nitty gritty and the fine language, you can find yourself. But if, if, if he's, uh, understanding our thoughts on that, then.
Yeah, I'm not saying we have to go in and change work roles. I'm just saying that if you're considering things and there might be work roles that can be shifted, it's just one more opportunity to, for things to negotiate is what I was thinking. I, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we keep it as narrowly focused as it needs to be, it doesn't need to be overly broad, but I, I think those are, that's a good list.
And again, benefits are pretty broad.
Yep.
So you go to court.
Any, any other comments, questions for Mark?
And if there is no more further discussion, I'll make the motion to defer this item to the next city council in a second.
Thank God, a motion of second to defer item resolution F twenty-two twenty-one to our next, uh, scheduled city council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mark, we'll come back, uh.
Yeah, and so then we'll table the, uh, salary table, that was basically the, the update to the wages, so.
We're always going to the table with a win-win attitude, for sure.
That's right.
Right? So resolution F two-two-one is deferred, and that will automatically defer our ordinance for this evening. Staff reports, Mark, do you have anything?
Uh, it's cold outside, uh, you know, watch your pats, please, uh, and watch out for each other. Uh, you see, see a neighbor struggling, please help them. City can, you know, so, 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 it's fantastic. That's really it.
Okay. I wanted to thank our new council members for volunteering to serve our community and look forward to working with you over the coming years. And also I wanted to thank staff and our wonderful employees. We had a lot of people on vacation over the holidays, but yet we continued to provide this high level of service that the citizens expect, and I thank you all. Council reports, Teresa.
Uh, nothing. Happy New Year and welcome, everyone. I am, I'm really optimistic. I really am. As I'm, I'm thrilled that we've got, um, some new young enthusiastic and slightly terrified people up here.
Oh. Oh, thanks, Your Honor. I agree the same. Well, Teresa's always optimistic, but it's, it's nice and, and welcome aboard. It's, uh, there's a bit of a curve, but you can handle it just fine. Everyone does. And Steve Marks, Light Department. Thanks so much. We're still a power on, the lights are on, we're not out of this thing yet. And Todd with, uh, snow plowing in our public service chiefs. We're safe and snug in our beds, uh, because of you guys, so thanks, everyone. It's going to be a great year. Thanks, Your Honor.
Thanks, Paul. Vince, I, I'm going to sound like a broken record, you guys always take all of the good stuff. Happy New Year, and, and thank you, Stan, for many years in the past.
Thanks, Vince.
I just want to say thank you for having me. Glad to be here.
Citizens.
Thank you guys for letting me be here. Um, I look forward to serving all of you and making sure this is continuing to be the best city it is to live in. Thank you.
Same as Jackie, uh, happy to be here. Looking forward to serving to the best of my ability. Hope I can be a, a value add at some point, probably not right now, but learning a lot, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just have to reiterate what they both said. I'm really looking forward to this opportunity and, um, I'm excited to learn a lot. Um, and, um, looking forward to just like understanding and helping out where we can.
Same, welcome aboard to you new council members. You have any questions? I'm probably the next newest, so I can probably help you assimilate a little bit, so I'd love to meet with any of you if you have any questions. Um, and then, um, yeah, Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks so much, because we get really cold. I think that's going to be good for all of us to stick together and, and, uh, that'll be great, so, uh, Happy New Year.
Thanks. Any final words of wisdom?
Do a journal.
Second, do a journal, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you all, we are a journal.